It's six oh one and I'd like to call this meeting of the Laramie County School District Number One Trustees, Board of Trustees to order. We will sign off with a pledge of allegiance if you please rise and join us.
I'm Brooke Kersley, Principal at Altimista Elementary School.
I'm Alicia Hamoka, sixth grade teacher at Altimista Elementary School. And this is my class going to be resetting the plan.
I declare to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite for all.
That was best. Well, thank you to the Altimista kiddos for for leading that for us. Dr. Newton, do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Madam Chair, we do have one adjustment to the agenda this evening. I'd like to submit the following motion. Motion D three point two, temporary waiving of facility use fees.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have a motion? To adopt the agenda?
Um, yes, I move to adopt the agenda with the agenda.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda with the adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes. We will add that item to do D three point two to the end of our new business section tonight. We will start out our meeting tonight with, I think, what is always one of the board's favorite things to do, and that is with some recognitions of students and employees. First, we would like to recognize, I'm trying to find my my notes here, um, two students, first student of the week, and the first student we would like to recognize tonight for the week of September fifteenth is Camila Vasquez from South High School. Is she here tonight? Awesome. And she will be joined by Principal Carrie Gentry and favorite teacher Heather Marchezy. Yes, okay. That's that top one over there. Thank you.
Maybe. Dr. Newton, Madam Chair, Board, thank you so much for helping us celebrate this wonderful student, twelfth grader Camilla Vasquez. She was chosen because not only is she an amazing scholar, she's also our student body president and National Honor Society, has won the seal of by, earned the seal of biliteracy. But I think what makes her stand out the most is her infectious smile and her love and passion for service. Everything she does, I think she's serving somebody else. And I think she takes a lot of pride in that. And so I'm going to let Camilla just speak a little bit about her experience itself. How's that sound?
Hi, I'm Camilla Vasquez. I am a senior at South High School. I would just like to recognize the amazing community we have at South High School. I think I wouldn't be the student that I am if it weren't for the community we have at South High School. I think everyone is very welcoming. I receive a lot of support from my teachers and like Ms. Marchezy, I think she has just make me grow so much as a student, but also just, like I said in my video, like just in life in general, I have grown so much and it's because of the staff and community that we have at South High School. So I really love our community at South High School.
Good evening. I'm Heather Marchezy. I teach English at South High School. I am truly honored to have the opportunity to introduce Camilla Vasquez as South Student of the Week. I was lucky enough to teach Camilla for two years and work as her National Honor Society sponsor. In my twelve years as an educator, it is extremely rare to come across a student as exceptional as Camilla. Not only is she a hard worker and insightful thinker, but she's a compassionate leader. And her maturity and kindness leave a lasting impression on anyone she meets. Camilla excels in her coursework and consistently challenges herself to reach new heights of achievement. She's involved in Student Council, We the People, Gear Up, FCC LA Soccer, and the Mayor's Youth Council. As student body president, she approaches every challenge with determination and grace. Academic achievements aside, Camilla's character is what truly sets her apart from her classmates. Camilla is motivated by knowledge and curiosity when most students are motivated by a grade in the gradebook. Her curiosity in and out of the classroom is what makes her a lifelong learner. I have no doubt that Camilla will continue to thrive in her future endeavors. She's passionate about becoming an immigrant lawyer and her seal of biliteracy with honors recognition is one of the many ways she's preparing for her future. Congratulations, Camilla.
And with every great kid comes great parents. So can we have Candy and Guadalupe stand, please? And maybe anybody here that's here to support Camilla? Thank you so much.
Yeah, we have one more student. So once we do all that, one hand. Yeah, thank you. The next student we'll be recognizing tonight is for the week of September twenty second. I'd like to invite David Snyder up, who is an eighth grader at Carey Junior High School. David will be recognized by Principal Matt Schlegel and favorite teacher Madison Marker. No, you're not Madison. Are you Madison? Okay, perfect.
Dr. Newton, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight. Just an amazing student. Our first student of the month for this school year. It's always difficult to find a student that everybody gets to know quickly in the first month of school. And so I kind of put it out to staff, but kind of expecting that as a principal that we would probably as a leadership team get to pick our student of the month. But I was amazed right away, staff members, David Snyder, David Snyder, David Snyder, with all of the incredible reasons that I'm sure that Mr. Mar Care and myself will talk about. But when we saw that, it was like, yeah, unanimous decision, David Snyder. When I go into a classroom, well, as a seventh grader and again as an eighth grader, I could tell you that I really thought David picking out a favorite teacher would be kind of difficult to pick from. Because every class you go into, he's got the same effort, the same drive, the same tenacity to learn. And I didn't know what his favorite subject was until we had the conversation about student of the month. Truly gifted student, works hard in everything that he does with a kind, caring, quiet, positive leadership style. So without further ado, would you please put your hands together for David Snyder?
My name's David Snyder. I'm an eighth grader at Carey Junior High. At Carey, I do weights club and I'm part of the National Junior Honor Society. Outside of Carey, I like to participate in Kempo Karate. I have a four point O at Carey, hoping to keep that. Want to introduce Mr. Mar Care, my favorite teacher at Carey. He makes history super enjoyable because of how enthusiastic he is about it. And he's super encouraging to all of his students.
What an honor to be here tonight. Thank you all so much for having me. David, thank you so much and congratulations. This is such a wonderful honor. I've just had the pleasure of getting to know David over the past month. And what I can tell you in one month is he is unbelievably kind and attentive and intelligent. He has fantastic work ethic. He's very thorough. And we've gotten to connect on a lot of things so far right out the bat. David is a world traveler. He's extremely knowledgeable in geography. So at the beginning of my class periods, when I do my bell ringer in geography, David is just a whiz at knowing the answers and he can usually connect to the material and maybe talk about his experiences, which is unbelievable. David is also a gifted musician. He plays cello in orchestra. And he loves to play drums and bass and piano and all kinds of other instruments. And we got to talking about that on the first day and David showed me his camera roll on his iPad and it was full of percussion instruments. Sorry if you think that's goofy, but I thought it was the coolest thing ever. We totally bonded over that. I cannot wait to get to know David more. He is an absolutely fantastic student and everybody in the school knows it. He's great to his peers and he's great to his teachers and administration. And we really are just so gifted to have him. So thank you so much for honoring him tonight. Congratulations, David.
I would love to have Jamie and Dan stand. I think Grandma's here as well. Thank you guys for bringing your kiddo to school every day.
Well, congratulations to these students and their favorite teachers. Western Vista Federal Credit Union also sponsors awards for the student of the week. So at this time, I'd like to invite Stephen Leaf Green, President and CEO to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So both of these students are absolutely amazing. You guys are absolutely fantastic. Keep up the great work at school. You know, I always have a script. I never stick to it because you guys, just what your teachers talk about and just your dedication is just phenomenal. So from Western Vista, thank you. Keep up the great work in school. We're super proud of you guys. We're glad to support you a little bit as well. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Love it. And if you don't mind, we'd love to shake hands to start on there.
Thanks, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you. Congratulations.
The next recognition we'll be doing tonight is our employee spotlight award. And tonight, we're super excited to be recognizing Dr. Amy Castle. Dr. Castle, if you don't mind, to come forward with Chuck Kern, who is our Director of Secondary Instruction, and Karen Delbridge, who is the principal from Central High School and the unit president.
Chair Smith, Honorable LCSD One Board of Trustees. I'm Chuck Kern. It is my privilege to introduce Dr. Amy Castle for our employee spotlight. Since joining LCSD One in two thousand and one, Dr. Castle has earned many local, state, and national recognitions. In two thousand and six, she earned her National Board of Certification in Adolescence and Young Adulthood Mathematics. She now serves as a mentor to other LCSD One candidates applying for their National Board Certification. In two thousand and ten, Dr. Castle was awarded the prestigious Arch Colteach achievement award. This annual award recognizes Wyoming's K twelve teacher that best demonstrates exceptional teaching practices. Based on nomination letters from students, Cheyenne's local television station awarded her the Golden Apple for her work in the classroom during the thirteen fourteen school year. Dr. Castle has earned the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. In two thousand and seventeen, this distinction was bestowed upon K twelve mathematics teachers by the United States government. Awardees must develop and implement high-quality instruction informed by content knowledge which demonstrates an enhancement of student learning. In addition to her, to her many recognitions, Dr. Castle frequently visits all classrooms to share insights and provide consistent coaching. Additionally, she visits every secondary math PLC at least once a quarter. As a result of her efforts, LCSD One is experiencing noticeable growth in state and national assessments. Beyond the classroom, Dr. Castle co-founded LCSD's One's Teaching Apprenticeship Program. Her work developing LCSD One teacher development pipelines has earned both state and national recognition. Finally, Dr. Castle was introduced into the East High School Hall of Fame in two thousand and twenty-three, joining many illustrious alumni. With that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Amy Castle.
Dr. Newton, Madam Chair, Board members, thank you for this honor. I've been a part of the school district since two thousand and one and it has been a fabulous place to work. Taught at East High School for a number of years and now serves as a secondary math coordinator. And I can tell you, we have very dedicated students, teachers, administration, who love kids and want to do what's best for kids. So I really enjoy having that camaraderie ship and collegiality. So thank you very much.
Dr. Castle, if you'll just stay here for just a minute. At this time, I would like to, gosh, my screen just changed. I would like to call our Western Vista rep back up and do another presentation for you.
Doctor, as a parent, more importantly, of a student here in Laramie County School District One, thank you for your dedication to our students. It shows, it shines. Thank you for that. So as the CEO of Western Vista, we appreciate what you're doing and what you do to give back to the students and to the staff. So with that, here's a certificate of appreciation, a little gift certificate as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Leaf. The next section on our agenda is public comments. The purpose of the board meeting is to conduct the business of the district publicly. The board sincerely values community input and feedback on school operations and welcomes public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items. Individuals wishing to comment during a board meeting must sign up by five forty-five PM on the day of the meeting. Sign up for public comment can be done electronically by accessing the form available on board docs under the public comment portion of the meeting agenda. Alternatively, individuals may also contact Darlene Davis to be added to the electronic signup sheet. We will begin by hearing public comment on agenda items, followed by public comment on non-agenda items. Please keep in mind, this is a time for board members to listen and consider, but not to comment or debate. The board asks that all speakers state your first and last name. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. And note that if you wish to discuss matters pertaining to the employment of a district staff member, such as the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, investigation, discipline, or dismissal of an employee, this will not be done during the public comment portion of the meeting. Such comments should be directed to the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, or you may request to meet with the board during executive session. Typically, we would start with public comments concerning agenda items. I'm going to refresh this, but the last I checked, we did not have anyone sign up tonight to speak on agenda items. So knowing that, we'll move right into public comments concerning non-agenda items. And we have had four individuals sign up for that. So when I call your name, if you're here or online, please go and come forward and go ahead and start your comments. I believe, I believe the first one is, and I may say this wrong, Ayana Doty? I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Ayana Doty. I'm a proud born and raised member of this community. First, let me start by thanking you for the temporary reprieve and taking the time to reconsider this policy. Then I'd like to take the time to speak from the heart and start by saying, I grew up in a home impacted by addiction. We didn't have access to safe, affordable outlets. That kind of environment can last being scars. When families can't afford positive spaces for their kids, we all lose. We must do better for our kids and for our community. Every day, there are students walking out of homes filled with stress, addiction, poverty, and pain. Some don't know where their next meal is coming from or whether they'll even be safe when they get home. But until now, they've had one thing, a safe space after school, a place to escape for a couple of hours, a place where they could learn, grow, and be a part of something better. That's what programs like the Gladiator Wrestling Academy provide. Affordable, accessible outlets where kids can channel their energy in a positive way. But with rising facility fees in Laramie County School District Number One, programs like these are being pushed out. And when that happens, where do our kids go? Not every family can afford club sports or private programs. Some of these kids are trying to break generational cycles of poverty, addiction, and trauma. Programs like Gladiators doesn't just teach wrestling. They teach resilience, discipline, and self-worth. Let me share a story from one of our own, Trinity Warner, a mentor coach and the first female wrestling scholarship recipient from Cheyenne. In an August twenty twenty-four post from the Wrestle Like a Girl podcast, Trinity said she started wrestling because she was constantly getting into fights. Her high school wrestling coach, who was also her in-school suspension teacher, encouraged her to join the team and channel that energy into something positive and look at her now. This story speaks volumes. That is what's at stake. If we make it harder for programs like Gladiator to survive, we're not just cutting off access, we're cutting off hope. Please don't let these kids down. Help protect the spaces that protect them. Thank you for your time.
The next individual signed up for public comment is Jerry Marriott.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Jerry Marriott. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak tonight and I'd like to address the newly imposed facility fees. First, I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to reconsider this policy. I have four kids at home, one in college. They all do sports. We have been blessed enough at this point that we can afford for them all to participate in sports that they've grown to know and love. My youngest daughter is in wrestling with Gladiator Wrestling Academy as well. At the last board meeting, the swimming club showed up in full force and they made a lot of strong and valid arguments opposing these new fees. And the speakers did a wonderful job of addressing immediate and current impact that these fees will have on local club sports and the students that participate in them. I'm a person who works in operations, so my brain thinks of immediate and long-term impacts just right off the bat. And I want to just address some of the long-term effects that these new rates can impose. Cheyenne is a very strong and proud community-based city. It's one of the things that my family loves about this area. My husband is active duty military, so we aren't from here, but we hope to retire here because we love the community that's here. When we make club sports accessible for our kids, we begin to deteriorate the foundation of that community in a couple of ways, though. First off, making these sports that our kids know and love unaffordable for their families not only can create resentment in these kids. I know a couple of them spoke last week feeling as though the school district is choosing money over them. But it also just creates general boredom for them. There's not much out there to replace these activities for the youth in our town. And that's when we start seeing growing numbers of kids getting into destructive habits. Coming from a city where there isn't a lot available, we see a lot of kids into drugs, as sad as it is. We see a lot of destruction of property and just silly little things. Second, I wanted to address that these sports are what provide our kids the strongest learning platforms for character traits like perseverance, conflict resolution, responsibility, loyalty, teamwork, and more. This is where they build the character that we need them to have to be productive adults in our community. You know, and this is not only for the future of our local Cheyenne community, but just our society as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual signed up is a student, so I'll just ask her to come up by initials, T W. If you signed up and those are your initials.
Madam Chair, she's online.
She's online. Perfect. Thank you.
Can you hear us?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Trinity Warner and I'm addressing the facility use fees. I am calling from my dorm room at Grandview University in Des Moines, Iowa, where I received a full ride scholarship to attend college and be part of the women's wrestling team here. It's an opportunity I would have never been fortunate enough to have without club sports. When I was a sophomore at South High, I was given in-school suspension after getting into a fight at school. While I'm not proud of my actions, I'm grateful for the repercussions because my ISS teacher was also the head wrestling coach. He encouraged me to turn my emotions into a positive outlet and recommended I try a wrestling practice or two. That's where my love for the sport ignited. It was a moment that changed my life forever and will always leave a mark on who I am and who I strive to be. While I'm thankful for the South High wrestling team, I really owe all my success and even being scouted by Grandview to the ongoing work Coach Oheda puts in the Gladiator Wrestling Academy day in and day out. It was the offseason training, summer camps, and USA tournament opportunities that helped me get to where I am today. And charging this club outrageous fees to utilize the high school wrestling room that would otherwise only get used three months out of the year is a huge detriment to the community and athletes like me. Furthermore, my mom is a single mom of three kids. I'm very proud to be the first female wrestler coming from South High to get a full ride scholarship. My parents would have never been able to afford this university for me and certainly not the wrestling club fees with the rising cost to use the wrestling room. I come before you today to urge you to rethink these fees, work with club sports, and create a partnership to ensure other kids just like me have the opportunity to learn a new sport, grow with it, and earn scholarships from their talents. Without the opportunity I was given, I wouldn't be where I am with the opportunity to grow and find who I am to be. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more individual signed up to speak and that is April Ojeda.
Good evening. My name is April Ojeda. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight regarding also the fee schedule. I'm a little more long-winded, so I'm going to try to make all my points. But I want to speak specifically to the fee schedule. We've all heard what it's going to do to our kids and our communities. First is how the fees were researched. It was noted that locations such as L triple C and city facilities were looked into, although in our case, the only three wrestling rooms in our community that are padded appropriately for youth safety are located in the three high schools. Dr. Newton had mentioned these fees are for high-impact areas that incur costs to the facility. And Mr. Knapp noted the fees are strictly operational and not wear and tear. Outside of turning the lights on, I'm unsure of what cost is for a wrestling room. Second is how the fees were implemented. While Natrona County was cited as comparable model, it seems our district selectively chose elements that result in higher charges. Natrona uses an hourly rate for short-term use and a flat ten dollar per participant per month for long-term use based on two to three days of weekly access. That's what we're about. Their policy also clearly exempted student-related, school-related, and nonprofit activities from facility fees. We meet all three of those criteria. And actually, our high school wrestlers right now are training our three and four-year-olds. Additionally, Natrona only charges a personnel fee for emergency maintenance, not the forty-five dollar standard cost the new policy proposes. Third is the fees don't reflect the actual size or use of the space. On the August eighteenth meeting, Mr. Knapp classified the wrestling room as an auxiliary gym, yet it's less than half the size and still charged the same. Custodial staff are already on duty during those hours, but rarely Custodial staff are already on duty during those hours, but rarely enter the room. In fact, in my husband's 10 years as a head coach, he recalls only a handful of times a custodian has stepped inside. He handles all of the cleaning, mat maintenance, and repairs himself, the tasks that janitors aren't trained for. Our club is being charged $1,000 a month to practice. South High received new mats last year for $45,000, meaning our club alone could purchase brand-new mats at the high school level every four to five years. Next, it's also noted that facility usage must go through the facility scheduler. I'm almost out of time, but I urge you to all review the public uh, facility calendar for wrestling clubs specifically across our three high schools, and you'll see a wide discrepancy between our three wrestling clubs. Lastly, how these fees will affect our club and our community. All the money we raise goes directly back to our club kids. These fees will eliminate our steam, our state team dinner, our year-end awards banquet, and the free admission into our summer camps. The YMCA is closing their doors in four days, removing a huge pillar of youth sports in our community. Aside from school and city wreck sports, what else is there to offer the youth of Laramie County? Thank you.
Thank you all for speaking with us tonight. We'll now move into our board communications and reports. Before we start that, I just wanted to give an overview of some upcoming meetings. Next Tuesday from 12 to 1:30, we'll have the executive board team with the meeting with the superintendent. On October 6th will be our next regular meeting. We'll start at 5:00 PM in the board, or actually, I guess work session is in the room next door, but 5:00 PM work session in a 6:00 PM regular board meeting. Then on Tuesday, October 15th, from 12 to 1, we'll have a board planning meeting uh, with our superintendent, and so if there are uh, board members who might be available to come that day, then we could take two, if anyone wanting to commit to that.
Uh, what was the date on that?
October 14th from 12 to 1, it's a Tuesday.
I can go.
Okay, so Dr. Hinkle.
Madam Chair, I'll do that.
Okay, okay. So we have trustee Hinkle and trustee Burden uh, down for that. And then on Monday, October 20th, we will have the second regular board meeting of the month um, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. Do we have any individual board communications or reports that anyone would like to share?
Um, yes, thank you, Ma- Madam Chairman. Um, I just wanted to say, um, uh, I was, uh, I helped participate in the Cheyenne Schools Foundation run for number one on Saturday, and it was a fabulous event. Um, they will be presenting some of the prizes for most money raised and most uh, participants from schools at our next board meeting in October. Um, but you know, one of the things that I found so refreshing about this was that we had uh, band members and cheerleaders and ROTC members from all the high schools there. Um, and it was just wonderful just to see everybody coming together in a, in a fun event where they're not, they're not competing against each other, other than the runners. Um, and um, so it was a really fun event just to see um, how the community came together to raise funds to help teachers with um, uh, grants and things like that. So we'll hear more about those grants at our next meeting, uh, but I just wanted to say it was a really fun event, and um, if you, if um, anybody listening was not able to participate, it is something that's done every year to help raise uh, funds for uh, grants for teachers, and uh, so if you didn't get to come this year, please join us next year.
Thank you, trustee Hinkle. That is really, it's always an incredible event and really a great way for the community to come together to support our schools. Um, any other trustees? Trustee Cook? Or trustee Ashby, whoever.
Um, yeah, uh, one, uh, one thing that I had participated in was Henderson's Olveas Kickoff Color Run. And it was really a fun event. Henderson does a really good job at doing lots of variety of different things, and parents really participate, the kids had a ball, and they all went home all messy, and so it was pretty fun. And then also with the um, run on Saturday, our own trustee Humphrey, she came in, uh, she, she placed in the run, so yay Brooke. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You do not.
No, I do.
Okay, anybody else? All right, well, that will conclude our individual board communications and reports. I'd now like to turn it over to Dr. Newton for reports from superintendent and staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I too want to thank and congratulate everyone who was involved in the the Cheyenne Schools run for number one. Um, as my lovely daughter noted, Dad, did you agree to start the race so you wouldn't have to run in it? And I said, that's exactly. Um, so I was happy to be the starter of the race. Um, I do want to thank all the volunteers. It takes a whole lot to put that together. Um, we all arrived early and the, the ROTC kids were already on, at their place on the course um, more than an hour before the actual event and, and uh, as well as all the other volunteers who made that event happen. Uh, before we meet again in this room, uh, we will be celebrating National Custodial Worker Day. That will be on October 2nd, and um, we'll send something out to all of our custodial staff. But I wanted to mention in this meeting just how grateful we are for all they do to keep us up and running. I, um, a few weeks ago, I attended a couple of events that I thought I would speak to a bit. Um, the first was the Next Gen Construction Sector Meeting, where industry folks within different sectors, and in this case, the construction trade sector, get together to problem-solve and talk about uh, next steps in our community. And um, as well as the Greater Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce, where I was uh, able to share a few words the other day. And together, those things have that topic on my mind. It's very enlightening to hear those in the industry talk about um, the evolving needs in our workforce and um, and how our community needs are increasing and changing almost day by day. And um, I said it in that form, but I want to say it in this forum as well, that we'd like to reiterate that Laramie County School District Number One stands committed to be an integral part of the workforce conversation for jobs in our community, for our kids, to keep them in our community that are high-skill, high-wage, and high-demand. I would like to note that our current career and technical education program in our secondary school offers over seventy, seven-zero, distinct courses in various trades. So we certainly um, are putting our coursework behind our commitment to helping kids be prepared to be productive members of our workforce. We look forward to any new industry folks who would like to partner with us through work experiences, internships, job shadowing, and the like. This community has a long history of supporting our kids in our schools financially. We'd like to, at this time, also um, thank them for that, but also, moving forward, express our need for our workforce, our community, their time and their expertise of all those in the business sector who can help light the way for our students who may want to consider all of the workforce options that this community has to offer. And with that, Madam Chair, that's the end of my reports.
Can I ask you questions to that?
Yeah.
Um, was there discussion at the Next Gen Partnership about anything else that the district could be doing to support that work?
Um, Madam Chair, trustee Ashby, I think they recognize that getting to know our kids before they graduate and uh, and um, start making other decisions in life is um, very much a next step. Um, I've shared this example before. It's probably worth sharing again. Our students who are achieving the highest academically in um, uh, in college-bound coursework, spend most of their senior year taking college-level coursework while they're still experiencing the support of our high schools, our staff, our interventions, all of those supports that we have in place. I think the industry is starting to contemplate what that could look like in the workforces uh, for those that are looking to go into the trades in the workforce as well. How could they spend their senior year while they're still enrolled with us, perhaps exhausting all of the coursework we do have to offer in career and technical education, and spend that senior year much like our, our seniors academically might spend it with college-level folks? What might that look like sp- uh, spending the senior year with industry-level folks? I know that a lot of our industry partners are talking about pulling their own workers off the job site in order to work with groups of our kids. Um, I think we're seeing them come into our classrooms, demonstrations, um, just Q and A sessions, and really just spending time getting to know the kids like never before. I think we've really turned a corner in that respect. So I think they're, they're up for any idea, and I think the very beginning point is um, before they leave us as high school students, how can our industry partners get to know them a little better and all of the opportunities that are in our community?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Newton. The next section on our agenda is the consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does any board member request to remove a motion from the consent agenda? If you know, do we have a motion?
I move to approve all motions listed as consent agenda.
A nice second.
To have a motion and a second to approve all motions listed as consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, those have been approved. Now we'll move on to new business. Um, do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but I got all discombobulated on the order of that. Dr. Newton, can we have a discussion about the buses, just to kind of make sure we have that in public? I meant to do that, and I forgot.
Sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if you'll allow, Mr. Knapp, could you?
Oh.
Please come forward for consent, uh, consent agenda item D.16, the purchase of school buses. Explain that a little bit to us. But, but I always prefer Adam, so come on up, Mr. Greenwood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad you accepted the question.
Okay, um, I, I just had a concern um, about just making sure we uh, discussed why we're replacing eight buses and how that process works, and maybe even talk about where that money comes from. It's just a lot of money to just say, yes, we're going to spend that all of a sudden. So I just wanted to make sure that the public knows why we're doing that and how that gets addressed.
Absolutely. Um, Madam Chair, trustee Hinkle, the chapter 20, WD Chapter 20 states the out-of-service criteria for school buses. Um, it's based on replacement cycle of seventeen years or 240,000 miles. Um, these eight buses, um, that we're ordering, three of them hit their uh, seventeen-year replacement, another uh, five hit their 240,000 miles. So the buses are purchased from the state bus bid. Um, they go with low bid. Uh, we work with vendors uh, to work out the price for that low bid. And then we purchase the buses. Once we see the buses in and they're paid for, we'll get a reimbursement from the state over a period of five years. So basically 20% per year on each bus for reimbursement. But they are fully reimbursable.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any more questions for Mr. Greenwood?
Yeah, as long as you're up here. Thank you um, for having that bus available for those Davis kids to get from the west side of Yellowstone safely to Davis. So I've seen the new school bus route. It goes through my neighborhood, and I'm real appreciative that those kids get to school safely. So thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move right into new business um, for item D.3.1. Do we have a motion?
I move to grant permission for East National Honor Society to fundraise for the trip to the National Conference in Washington, DC on February 26, 2026, to March 2nd, 2026.
And I second.
So we have a motion and a second to grant permission for East High Schools National Honor Society to fundraise for their trip. We have any questions or discussion on that item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of granting this permission, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, that has been approved. And we have um, an item that we added to our agenda tonight, um, if we can get that motion.
Um, due to the temper, to the recent closing of the YMCA, the access to facilities in our community has been drastically altered. As, as we, as a community, process the effects of this recent development, I move that the board tempor- temporarily waive facility fees for any facility use on the dates beginning Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, through January 12th, 2026. At that time, the board will provide an update on next steps. In this interim period, all requirements for scheduling, insurance, supervisors, available days, et cetera, will remain in effect.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have any questions or discussion on that? I just wanted to clarify, it's Tuesday, September 22nd, so this would be effective. Oh, never mind. Mine says 22nd. Um, so this would be effective tomorrow, and it would be effective through um, the date of our January 12th board meeting. Um, so that gives a little bit of a reprieve uh, for a few months, and in January, then we'll, we'll provide an update on, on where that moves forward. Um, but as um, Doc, as trustee Hinkle said in reading that motion, um, any of the requirements for scheduling, um, for insurance, supervision, available days for the facilities, those will remain in effect as they were in the fee schedule that, that was passed um, last month. Um, but there will be um, no fees assessed for facility use during that, that time if this passes, so. Um, so we have a motion and a second um, to temporarily waive the facility fees um, from Tuesday, September 22nd through January 12th, 2026. And we didn't have any other discussions, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So that has been passed, and those fees will be waived um, for that timeframe. And that is it for um, our new business items. Um, gosh, sorry. Do we, um, actually, first, the next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, October 6th, 2025, at 6:00 PM with the work session that begins at 5:00 PM. The district of the business, gosh, the business of the district is now done. Uh, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session prior to adjournment for the purpose of possible student-long-term suspensions or expulsions, personnel, and legal advice.
I second.
Do we have a motion and a second to go into executive session at this time? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we are going into executive session, and we'll